Check it off.
Oh, in my face.
Is that right?
Okay.
Can you give it to me in a second?
Okay.
Pretty tell me, because that's my team. Fifty percent of our group is not ready for it. Fuzz allegiance to the flag. It's a public for racist ass. One nation under God, indivisible, that's every religion. We've got a couple of the holidays.
Do you have a chance for?
Yeah, I will do that. This is very exciting. Let's do it. Hold your thing for my tea. This is like civilized.
It's so far.
You all have like wigs on them, so they make it very English.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright. So, overview of the village operating budget. For no increase.
Well, I'm gonna have a hand down. On the first page, um, is the worksheet for the tax cap. And I'm sure you've already heard that the tax cap right now for the village is the lowest it has been in the five years since it's been introduced by, um...
Can't remember if it's lower.
Um, no, zero.
Yeah, zero is about it.
So, we're talking about, um, point one-two percent. As you recall, it started off as the two percent tax cap.
Crazy.
It is. So, it's geared into what they believe is the rate of inflation, that's the inflation rate. So, it's, um, the lowest of either two percent or the rate of inflation. So, they use the rate of inflation.
Fred, don't touch your bag.
Point one-two somewhere on the sheet.
On the top, yeah, on the top page, um, I'll start from the top on the calculation. They ask first, this is a prior year levy. Then they give you, um, a growth factor. So, this is the amount that the state gives us that's equal to the growth in our tax base that allows you to increase your levy. Um, so it's, uh, point four-six. And what that does, it gives us a sixty-two thousand dollar...
Point four-six. Point zero-zero-four.
Right, well, the one is the factor, um, oh, because it's like...
Less than a half a percent, basically.
So, then one, you just hold it up and by itself, you're getting...
Yeah, exactly.
It's a little more than one. So, it's not going up one point, it's going up a point...
The point four-six, right.
Oh, so if it was one point zero-zero-zero-zero, it would be...
It's not one and a half, it's a half.
Okay.
It's a half, or less than a half. Um, and what, what that means... Well, one would, would, would these, would not be an increase. So, it's the point left, would be five.
Right, right. So, if you multiply this times one, you get the top line again.
Yes, exactly, you're right, yeah.
Okay, so what it gives us is a sixty-two thousand dollar increase. So, they're allowing us to grow our levy by sixty-two thousand to compensate for the growth in our assessed values, or the growth in our...
I'm sorry, it allows us to grow by...
Our levy by sixty-two. So, on the right side, you see sixty-two thousand, okay. Um, so that's our growth factor. Uh, the next, uh, component here is the actual allowable levy growth, which we said was the lowest in five years. As the point, point one-two, it says zero-zero, because it's a percent, you know, so it's a point one-two percent. And that allows us to grow our levy by sixteen thousand dollars. So, if it wasn't for the growth in our meeting, we would only be allowed to grow our levy by sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, the next component here is the amount of, um, levy we did not increase our levy by, was the growth factor that we did not increase by, we were able to accumulate it and roll it over into a subsequent year, and we have a total of one-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand. So, if you add those three components together, it gives us a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand. Uh, this is for illustrative purposes, we're not saying we're doing this, but we would be able to increase our levy by two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand and still be in compliance with the tax cap.
We'd have nothing for next year.
I know, nothing for next year, right. If we put all our eggs in...
So, the prior year is only the immediate prior year that we got that one-hundred-and-eighty-three from? That resulted from...
We had more, uh, we used some of it last year. I can tell you how much, but I think it was over two-hundred thousand, and we used some of it last year towards our budget. But it didn't come from last year, it came from prior years.
That's correct, okay, that's right. And this is all that's left.
Right.
And just to be clear, so it's a carryforward of level limits, so in other words, the budget didn't reach the allowable limit under the levy, so we are allowed to carry that forward as a credit, if you will, that could be added to this year's budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
So, it's just really for, to, to take this information and, you know, put in your mind that this would be the amount that we could increase our levy and have, so it is a starting point to see, you know...
And still reach that point one, the, the...
So, this section...
The point four-six?
Uh, the point one-two percent.
Oh, point one-two, okay.
Right, because, um...
Why did I get, oh, that was, that was my, four-six is called...
It's a gross office.
Right, okay, it's point one-two, right, that, that one, right.
It's due to, you know, let's say, um, the building and renovation, whatever is growing, they do.
Is that by town, or is that by actual village? It's by town?
It's by village.
So, these things of which we have none written after it, what would it be, what is it about when it says judgments over five percent? What is that?
If, if, if we had major, they give an allowance if you were to have major judgments against the village, I don't want lawsuits.
Like, not settlements, but actual judgments.
Ah, okay.
So, you, you're in a lawsuit, you're sued, even just a tort claim someone pulls on the street, there's a judgment that exceeds five percent of your levy, which is a big number. That amount over five percent can be excluded. The first five percent, you can't...
You're excluded, yeah.
Right.
Right, and of course, that's the amount not covered by insurance, what, you know, actual...
Well, out of pocket, or so hardly anybody probably uses that.
Yeah, I mean, it hasn't, hasn't...
It's part of the mandate, really, so...
Oh, yeah, okay. And then, and then the other one, pensions over two percent, that we have none written after it, so what's that mean?
At this point, um, what that means is when we first, when this was first introduced, the pension, uh, the pensions contribution was still rising, and they gave an allowance for that.
So, in other words, the pension increased by...
Over two percent.
Two percent, so a seven percent increase in pension costs.
They'll give you allowance.
You can take off your, uh, five percent doesn't count towards your tax cap calculation.
Right.
So, it's possible...
We have taken advantage of that in the past.
In the past, yeah.
Because there had been increases over two percent. But not this year.
But there wasn't this year.
No, this is a state, you'll see on the next page, so that it's actually down.
Tax levy limit plus exclusions.
Which gets you, so you're excited to me, but that's another, uh, whatever.
What is that line?
In fact, in health insurance, it's like nine percent, and are, they say that, that, uh, Fred, I'm skipping ahead.
Yes, tax levy limit plus exclusions.
What is...
The summation.
That's the summation.
This number, backing up these dawns.
So, you started out with the thirteen-five, and you're adding in leagues along this side, and you get to that.
Okay, right.
So, they're like, oh, so there's a lot. So, basically, right, so then was his projected tax levy, I mean, the level to what we have now, to give us, to illustrate how much we could increase it. So, once we go ahead and we have, you know, the budget formally, we'll put that in there and see if we're, oh, you know, plus or minus. So, for right now, um, this is illustrating the two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, that would be the total available amount. Everyone go there now?
Of, over that amount, that dollar amount, over and above what the tax levy was last year?
Yes.
Can be this much more, two-hundred-and-sixty-one-five-sixty-eight, and still fit this system?
Yep.
Yes.
With zero carryforward for next year, so...
Right.
So, in other words, we can all go on that cruise we've been talking about.
That one.
When you say zero carryforward, that means like...
If we use this one-eighty-three up, that's what's kind of saving us this year, because we only have sixty-two and sixteen. So, a portion of this number, this is from, we haven't used it up in prior years.
Okay.
So, that's, you know, you're adding basically these numbers together to get to this number.
Right.
If we use this whole number, then we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have this number next year, so...
It's like completing your savings.
Exactly, right.
Okay. But it's not a very...
We're not making the recommendation, we're just, we're just putting the facts on the table, unless the whole system's out the window.
Go next year, tax cap thing. And pilots, payments, and low taxes, how does that work?
If we had an increase or decrease, we got, ours is the same, um...
No, I see sixteen is...
Right, if, if, if we had, um, a new one coming in, then that would factor in, because we have the, the advantage of our pilots, so they factor it in.
So, you have to take this off?
I do have to take it off.
Yes, because I think we're gonna, we'll have to look at that coming up, because they're, out of that sixteen thousand, ten thousand is Columbia, and six thousand is, was the fee property. If that fee property's not going to be paid going forward, we have to reduce that, but that's, these are basically...
This is more of our historical purposes.
Yeah, yeah, but this, that, the, uh, the tax cap, um, tries to neutralize, um, the, the government shifting major amounts of the budget from tax levy over to pilots.
Which we, right.
So, in other words, if we sat here and said, boy, we can only raise two-hundred thousand, but if I can get that business to pay me three-hundred thousand dollar a year, and not in property taxes, but in a pilot, well, then I can spend another three-hundred thousand, you know, I could spend a lot more over here on the, on the tax side, I can tax up to this number, uh, and still get all the money I need. That, this formula is designed to prevent that from happening, you know what I mean? So, it, but we don't, but that doesn't exist here, so it's, it's not in place, and that's what it's for.
Okay. All right, so, um, the next page is, is a very simple, the thing, um, synopsis of, um, some of the major components of our budget. Also, we've gone to our department heads to ask them if they anticipate any, uh, problems or anything in their departments that would have a significant increase or a decrease to their budget. And at this time, no one's come forward with anything, so basically, it's, um, there are no unforeseen, you know, things happening on the departmental level. So, uh, given that we have these items where we anticipate the, of these changes that are on, that are listed here. So, the first one is debt service. Um, we took out, you know, bond anticipation note this year, uh, there's a payment due next year, um, it's an increase of forty-seven thousand dollars, and I have here a comment that the refunding we did earlier saved the village, saved the general fund specifically, twenty-seven thousand dollars. So, it would have been twenty-seven thousand dollars higher hadn't we done the refunding, we refinanced the whole bond.
Okay.
Um, health insurance...
So, this refunding means refinancing, not giving it back?
No.
Return, refund it?
Yeah, they call it refunding.
Refunding it?
It's not giving it back, no, it's a refinance, right. Just like you have a mortgage, you get a lower rate home. Um, on health insurance, uh, this past year, we had, um, about a seven percent increase in our health insurance, this is for two thousand and sixteen. What we're doing here is anticipating a year from now, so it'll be January two thousand and seventeen, an increase we don't receive, we haven't received any projections, but it's in the neighborhood of about nine to ten percent, so...
Good thing there's no inflation.
Yeah, we're, again, this is a total, just putting a number out there, yeah.
And in, in past years, like, not just this one to last, but what were those health insurance increase numbers recently?
Seven percent.
Seven was on, seven was on the low side, actually.
That's what I meant, right. Seven, it was, it was ten or thirteen, or...
They were actually significantly higher for a couple of years, um, when the Affordable Care Act was adopted, because the...
Bringing on more...
The insurance carriers were much more concerned about the uncertainties that the law was creating, and so there was, there actually was, were bumps in premiums that who had looked through during that time. But in the next couple of years, it's seven, yes, but, you know, we're just being conservative.
Yeah, I get it.
It doesn't make a huge difference.
By the way, CPI is not a good healthcare, so just throw that out there. It's mostly, it's mostly oil and gasoline.
Yeah, which is, which is why...
It's gone down a lot, so it's, to me, the fact that you would base something on CPI, but, yeah, we kind of want to get too political tonight. We are saving money on gasoline.
So, where, which number are we looking at?
We're looking at retirement system. Uh, this has been, um, savings here, uh, the rate for the regular, um, non-uniform, which is, um, you know, staff and CSEA, that rate went down by fifteen percent. So, where was, um, eighteen, um, eighteen-point-six-oh, eight, almost seven, nineteen percent, it's down now to just under sixteen percent. So, it's a savings of fifteen percent, uh, in the rate. And just for anyone, just to fill you in, what that means is, um, they calculate, uh, the salaries that are paid, um, each payroll, we report to the retirement system of the salaries paid, and that's the percent that the village contributes to the employee's retirement. So, if the rate is sixteen percent, it's sixteen percent of the gross salary that is paid in.
So, how did the rate go down? Was that in...
It went down, um, they calculated, um, they have actuaries that look at, you know, their returns on the entire, um, retirement system investments, and they project with accruals, with actuaries, how much is needed, and if the stock market improves and the return on their portfolio is better, then our rate goes down. So, when you have the stock market, um, you know, collapse, so to speak, right, um, the, the contributions went up.
Right, right. New Jersey is one of the... It's, it's one of the few pension systems that's actually fully funded. So, we're not going to apply Detroit, then, huh? Yeah, and, or even, and I, I know, in recent years, I think I had heard New Jersey wasn't fully funded. Um, here, it's fully funded, so if, if investment return rates go down, employer contributions go up, there's a direct correlation. I mean, it takes time to work itself through the system, for...
But this is statewide, these percentages are statewide?
This is not, no.
The only thing that, that's Irvington-centric is, we take the percentages that apply to each category of employee, depends on when they were hired, and, you know, what tier they're in and all that, and apply that to the salaries that they earned here locally, that...
We're only responsible for our salaries, no one else's.
Right.
But this rate is the same across the state.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and the, oh, so the, um, then the police and fire, they have a separate category, uh, their rate went down about two and a half percent. So, combined, when you look at the projection on the salaries, this reflects, um, the decrease in contributions for the following, for next year. Um, the next one...
Wait, I'm sorry, I, I'm following the, the salary increases?
Year.
Yeah, hold on.
Okay, now that moved, uh... I combined a number, and Larry just pointed out, um...
Oh, and we'll update the spreadsheet for you.
What does that B stand for, next to library?
Yeah, fund, fund balance, yeah, that's, it's, it's, it stands for fund balance.
Very expensive Facebook. It's another generation.
Yeah, uh, so, the, while Brenda's doing that, the, where it says library, and then library Facebook, the, the fund balance.
Zero.
Appreciate that, Mark. So, so, the...
Okay.
The library, the library department is handled in a, in a separate operating fund on our books. The library operates by, um, they, they have their budget, which they approve as a library board, and they have, of course, very little revenue to offset that, just a few fines here and there. Everything else is supported by the, the village tax levy. So, um, the, that includes things like debt service for projects that they may have had in the library. So, the, this first line here where it says li, the library increase of eighteen thousand, the, the primary driver of that is, is debt service associated with whatever projects they may have completed in the last year or two. Um, so that's what that comment is about. The, the library fund balance, seven thousand dollars, um, for the last several years, the library has had a fairly healthy fund balance, um, in, you know, this rainy day fund, so to speak, and it was a high enough percentage of their operating budget that all involved felt that we could use, you know, twenty-some-odd thousand dollars each year from that fund to, um, to reduce the, to reduce the tax...
The tax burden, right.
Yeah, so, uh, because there's no reason that the library fund should be overfunded, you know, so...
It's just sitting there.
Right, exactly. So, so, there was, some was used in the last several years, um, to help with, uh, you know, offsetting the tax rate. The suggestion here is that it's starting to get down to a level where we're, we're satisfied where it is. It's about, I think, eighteen percent of budget.
Eighteen percent.
We don't want it to go much lower than, than fifteen or twelve percent of their budget, that, that's the hell, that's the right size for a fund balance for, for the library fund itself. So, the seven thousand dollars represents a reduction in the amount, the amount of that fund balance that we would be using, or we're suggesting would be used next year. So, instead of using, and I'm just using round numbers, instead of using twenty-one thousand, we'll use fourteen thousand. That means, that means that, yeah, that's, that now you, that's seven thousand dollars of fund balance you're not using, so that has to be made up somewhere, and that's through the tax rate, so, that's why that, that's... So, I've got a question, now this, I, I could be totally misconstruing, misremembering, whatever it was that, uh, but, um, there was a discussion about the new owners of, uh, coming in, and how it might change, um, the partnership, and how if they invest a lot of money into upgrading the building, uh, what percentage would actually be billed to the library? And so, that's, I'm trying, am I remembering this kind of correct phrase of the question is... None of that's reflected in here. Right, and how much risk, and then what timeframe are we talking about? I mean, no one risks, right? Yeah, well, the, here's the thing, um, as far as I'm concerned, it's nothing that you would be able to put into your budget right now. Um, all you heard was the prospective new owner telling you that this is what they planned to do. Right, right. They haven't closed the transaction yet. Um, yeah, they haven't closed on it yet. So, um, in my opinion, should continue to plan for the same maintenance costs in that building. Obviously, if there's new information, and we know by April, it's going to be reflected in this budget. Um, if we don't know by April, then I think the smart thing to do is continue with status quo, and, you know... I guess that's where I have the healthy fund balance to help you out, then. Yeah, I mean, look, you could, you could be aggressive, and you could make assumptions, and then when the assumptions don't pan out the way you expect, you'd have to use your fund balance, but that's not typically how we operate, or have operated in the past.
I'm sorry, I'm just comparing the debt service general fund and the library debt increase, there's mainly debt service for the library, but we're getting, we're getting lower rates of debt service for overall, maybe I'm incorrect, or...
The, the amount listed here is the, um, the forty-seven thousand for the debt service general fund and the library, which is mostly attributed to, to debt service. Those are the increases over the prior year.
Over the past year.
Oh, but the increase for the debt service general fund is less than it might have been because of...
Right.
Because of the state, right, okay, got it, thank you.
Yep.
Um, on the salary, which is just really a placeholder, if and when anything, um, is approved by the board, you just have to add a zero to it, add like decimal place.
So, the sal, salary increases should be hundred fifty-one-five-hundred.
Right, and the remaining...
I'm just looking for that right now.
And the remaining balance at the end is over/under would be twenty-four thousand five sixty-six.
Under.
Over.
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 What, was it twenty-fourth?
Twenty-four thousand five sixty-six, over.
That's that bottom number, right.
So, we're, we're budgeting in for possibly salary increases overall of a hundred fifty-one-five?
Correct. What we, um, this, we, we don't have the detail broken out for you, mainly because the, two of the three components are in negotiations with our, our two unions.
I understand.
So, we just have the, what the total pot is, we're not telling you the breakdown, not telling you the percentages here, we talk about it, um, in executive session, frankly, so, since it deals with collective argument.
What does it change, the increase number two, down the bottom?
Uh, twenty-four thousand five sixty-six.
That's total of the, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry, the total would be two-hundred-and-sixty, uh, two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-one-thirty-four.
Correct, right. I could have backed it in, but I figured...
Over/under.
That's the, the increase's number is two-eighty-six-one-thirty-four, and the over is two-four-five-sixty-six. So, okay. I know, just one of these, you get contracts, it's a three-year, I don't remember.
I combined, yeah, it was what you said, combined digits.
By some percentage, right, there was a calculation. So, that was through this year, I forgot with the time. The, um, the CSEA contract expired May thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and the police contract expired May thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. So, the money for potential increase for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, this current year that we're in now, was budgeted last year and remains in contingency. And will continue to roll until contracts are settled. Right, okay, I don't, I mean, I'm not trying to get any more detail, I'm just trying to get a sense of, that, it's, I seem to remember some discussion once. But it's not, it's not as though, um, there should be alarm that we're, you know, almost two years out on the police contract, I mean, there, there could be alarm from them and from us, we could watch different relations, but from a financial standpoint, it doesn't mean there's going to be a bomb drop all of a sudden, you know? Do you want some tea?
Yeah, yeah, I know, I'm a... Two-eighty-six number.
Are you still on the budget thing?
Yeah.
We're doing pretty good.
Some of those numbers, so...
Yeah, then if you flip back to the first page and say, the two-sixty-one...
Yeah, that's already, that's, that's on this, this one, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yes, yeah, that's the old round comparison.
So, we were down to, um, the savings, we, we illustrated the savings, uh, that we had to sustain in the streetlights and changed them to the LED.
Keep going, and we took some of that savings already in this year's budget. You took forty-five thousand?
We took about twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, yeah, and then this is an additional fifteen beyond that, so thirty-five is what we're assuming. But that's operating, that's electrical bill, savings, and we're not expecting, I thought we were expecting more than that, or you're just not coming? No, that, that's, I mean, we, we haven't seen a complete bill yet, so you actually do a one-to-one comparison, but, um... Is that fifty percent of our current? It's about fifty percent. Yeah, okay. Yeah, seventy thousand. I don't know why, actually, eighty is actually our total, uh, general village, streetlighting bill, um, we're, we're proposing taking thirty-five of that as savings, and we refine it by five thousand or so, if, well, let's see what the numbers are in the next couple of months. Well, certainly as we go forward, it'll be a better sense, right? Well, we'll see the bills. Yeah, exactly, okay. That's as real as it gets. And you have LED dental now, is that what you have?
Okay, okay, LED is just cute. Um, on the dental, I've, I've, um, I've been looking into other plans that are similar, you know, are equal to our current plan, there's a potential of switching carriers to save about fifteen thousand dollars, maybe a little more, but I listed, put fifteen thousand in. So, that's something that we're exploring now and feel that there's a, a good chance it will be changing providers. Um, on the audit, um, it's a small amount, perhaps three thousand dollars, we have a new RFP, I'll be sending out in the near future for auditing services.
Well, this is for, the difference for a new, a new audit contract, yes.
Right, so I, I know how much to anticipate, it'll be, uh, the, uh, general fund, you know, the general village, as well as justice court. Uh, now, on workers' compensation, um, I, we've put in a ten percent, just to be on the safe side, um, their actuaries are looking at the risk management department, is looking at the workers' comp, it really hinges a lot on our experience, um, there was a few, there was an item in there that was going to be falling off of our experience, that 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 component would lower our rate, but until I get it from them, I really can't anticipate anything's going on instead.
This really is just a placeholder at this point, we're just, we're trying to avoid what happened a couple of times, which is to be blindsided by March, you know?
And they come out...
Be ready to have your budget released, so, keep placeholder in there, and as we get more information, we'll refine it.
And the experiences are three or five-year sliding, I think it's three-year.
It's a three-year.
It's three years, but I think the third year ends a year prior, so it starts a year ago, and then goes back three years, so it's, it was an accident in 2010, that was a significant one that we think is falling off, but we just need to make sure that...
Sure does.
Yeah, exactly, it's until we see it.
All right. On a regular insurance village-wide, potentially at 3%, as we're anticipating without carrier. That's been general liability, and it's been very low over the past several years, it didn't spend zero for several years, so 3%.
Auto, public officials, all the, all the other lines, not, not workers' comp.
On the search memories, at this point, we need some more information. We haven't had any settlements this year, we didn't have many settlements last year as well. There's some activity projected, some court cases, I don't know if they're going to actually happen.
There is a, an update memo in your, it will be in your Friday folder this week, from our attorney that monitors this for us, and, you know, there's, there's a bunch of holes in it that are being worked on, and that's in terms of the information, so there, as far as we can tell, now, just, just so you know, what's the numbers in the budget?
220.
220, right. So, we have a budget item of $220,000 that on an annual basis, we had expected to have to have in payouts, and up until last year, we had, you know, very reliably made those payment payouts, there were settlements, they were being settled in an orderly fashion, we were making those payments, and, and that's a good thing, because this board had the foresight to, to put that item in the budget, as opposed to having to borrow every time there's a settlement. So, but last year, there was very little paid out for that, and, and this year, the current, there hasn't been any settlements, as Brenda said, and the memo that we got from our council didn't scare us yet. It might, if there's some more research, a little, you know, a little refining of it, but it's, we're not, we're not concerned about it. So, we have zero here, you know, if, if the, if the outlook is, is positive, maybe that, maybe that search area line goes down a little bit, maybe 220 is not the level that we're at anymore, we pay many of these payments over years.
We used it last year.
Plus, we also have revaluation coming up, which is going to be interesting, I don't know what that effect is, that's, that's going to be very interesting. It may be that that number's headed down to zero, I don't know, or, you know.
What's the process? They wouldn't go to search record for adjusting the new appraisal, right? They'd have to go through the new appraisal process, right? So, you're going to be delayed.
Before it takes effect.
Yeah.
So, there's still a few more years for that, but in fact, we're actually, I think next week, we'll be getting an update from the town assessor at the village officials' meeting, so, we'll have some better information on the timing of everything. So, anyway.
So, we have a placeholder, until we have more information, and it, and it could decrease, or it could be using some of our unspent money from the current year and rolling that forward. That's fund balance. Phones, it's a placeholder, we replaced one of my phones.
Did you get a refund for when your funds were out?
Yeah, no, that's, that wasn't good, but the long-term, the long-term on that is that there will be savings, we just are still in the process of fine tuning exactly the number of phones in the package that we need to purchase for the phones, so the, the amount of savings is yet to be determined.
Is that from the, is that from the telco, or is that...
It was, well, like now.
Yeah, okay, so then you're, so they do charge by phone, or by...
Yeah, they're by, by phone, essentially, by seat.
Yeah.
And so, we had a 50-seat package, we, we now have to go to a 75-seat package, and so, some of the numbers are going to be refined, but there will, there will be savings, I'm just not sure how much.
So, basically, at this point, given these items, and if you use everything that was available in the tax cap worksheet, it'll be over by 24,000, which is something that, you know, in refining, you would probably be able to reduce the budget somewhere, or increase, look at some of our revenues, perhaps, I'm sorry, 70% would be up. Right now, the way these numbers are falling into place, we'd be over...
24,566.
Right, and that's if we use the entire amount of it all over. So, that's...
So, we have to find that somewhere, or...
Well, that's a direction from the board.
Numbers.
Right, or if we, you know, decide to use half one year, half another, and then...
Yeah, I think as we get more information on some of the contingent line items that are here, I think we've been conservative in the way we, in the way we listed some of these issues, but hopefully, if we get, we get good news on these...
On workers' comp, for instance.
Yeah, you know, workers' comp, for example, maybe search areas, some of those items would give us a lot of relief, and maybe allow you to get underneath the cap, and still, so still have some carry forward for next year. That's part of what you should be thinking about, is what, what for next year. If, if we're lucky enough to be under the cap this year, and, and things look better than we anticipated, given the pension cost relief that we have, you should be thinking about next year, 2017, 18. You know, as far as your, your carry forward for that, because, I mean, as long as your, as long as your goal is to remain under the cap as, as, as best you can, you know, put it away.
Can you just, this is going to sound really unmotived, can you just remind us, what happens if we exceed the cap?
Well, this year is a little different than most. Prior to this, if the village exceeded the cap, all you had to do was pass a resolution, and there was no negative ramifications, except from your taxpayers, from your constituents, who will come to you and say, well, if you've exceeded the cap, how could you, and I'm not going to vote for you, you know, whatever, I mean, yeah, so, but there's no, there's no penalty from that.
It's not like Albany sends down a penalty.
No, 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 they have a provision, unlike the schools, the schools have to, it has to go out to a public vote.
And it has to be two-thirds.
And has, it has like 2000 or 60% or something.
Right.
So...
Difficult.
Here, you just have to vote majority, and, and you exceed it.
Okay. I thought it was a supermajority that we had.
It might be, it might be a supermajority, yeah.
For us, it's the same as a majority. Sixty percent?
Yeah, probably is.
You're only getting 60%.
60%.
So, the, this year, and last year, if you were compliant with the tax cap, then your residents qualified for the tax-free rebate checks.
Okay.
Which represents the amount of increased taxes from the village, they would get back in a, essentially in a rebate check.
Okay.
So, how much they got back, or will get back, is dependent on the assessed value of their house, and probably some other factors, some, some residents wouldn't even qualify because they're maybe over the income limits, personal income limits. So, last year was the first year that the tax cap, you had to comply, and we did, and...
And straight savings.
Right, and we had a, we had a government efficiency plan that was filed and approved, and all of that, we complied with, and the residents should get the rebate checks for the village taxes.
We haven't cut that.
I don't, I never can remember what the timing is with these things.
It's when they get to it, it's not...
The lien issue, the lien.
The lien is good now, but it's not...
But, but they started in the fall, for, as my understanding, so they're, they're still being issued. But those are different, you get checks for your school taxes as well.
Combined.
Which you probably already got, and they're, they're a year ahead of, right, they're a year behind what the villages are, so it's...
There's income limitations to it.
Right, so it's, it's, the timing is, I never can remember, to be honest with you. All I know is that the year that we had to keep complying with the cap, and filing government efficiency plan, we did.
Right.
This year, that in order to get another check, probably a year from now, we have to be complying with the cap, so that's, that's the impact, is the tax freeze.
Got it.
And I think next year, or this, this budget here, is the last one that is still tied to a tax freeze, like there's, after that, then it goes back to the way it was, where there's no...
It's just a resolution?
Just political law.
Right.
Yeah.
This was unexpected.
We used to be under the cap and over that anyway, because we made a political statement, so.
Yeah, last year, you couldn't even do that.
Yeah.
So, is it the whole, nobody gets done these checks if we go over the cap, or is it some sort of proportional?
Only the, only the entity that went over, you won't get, so the, the amount attributed to the village tax increase, you wouldn't get if we went over, but if the schools stayed compliant, you'd get the school rebate check.
Okay.
It's by each level of government.
But it would be the whole, for us, so, the village goes over the cap, no matter how much?
Yes, every resident would.
So, if you're going to go over the cap, and nobody's going to get it, you might as well go over the cap.
That's up for you, isn't it? Listen, there's, there's, there were lots of...
But there's no proportionality, so...
No, 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 once you're over, if you're over a dollar, your residents go...
And the refund is the amount that your levy goes up, so the provision is so small...
I see.
Well, yeah, it's probably, look, for some of the larger homes, it's probably several hundred dollars, you know, three, four, 500 dollars, for some of the more modest homes, it might be a couple hundred, or a hundred, or maybe less, I don't know, some of the larger homes also have the income limitations, but, I mean, that's, that's something that we have no information about, but you're right.
Can you say income?
If you make more than a certain amount of money, you don't get refunds.
No matter what.
I think it's 500,000 dollars, if I'm not wrong, right, that just rings a bell. But, we don't know, the state taxation department figures all that out, so.
Okay.
That's why I got you second. Thank you.
It's very clear.
The last page, just one more page, just very, one more number, two numbers to look at. What I did here is, I put in the, these expenditures, I plugged them as though this was part of the way we were issuing the budget. We have a slight decrease in our assessed valuation, it's very small, but there is one, so there's no major growth there, and the final line would be a 2.16% in the tax rate.
Increase.
Increase.
Currently.
Right, over last year.
It's aligned with what we've been doing for a while.
Yeah, you've been, I mean, you've been at the tax cap, and again, you know, with carry forwards and changes in assessed valuations, it's not going to be a simple 2% sitting here, or 0.12, or whatever, it's, it's just, this is how, this is where it shakes out. But this is a, this is not compliant, this is over the tax cap by 24,000, whatever that number was.
This 2.16%, that would, that's including that 24,000.
Right.
And last year, what did we do last year?
2.5. That's all listed here.
And then we went over the tax cap last year?
No, we didn't.
No, we were under by...
Bigger.
You were under by 183,000. We were under by 183,000 under the cap last year.
But the percentage increase was...
But there's a little decrease, yeah.
It's still an increase because you have the assessed values, so your rate can go up if your assessed valuation decreases.
Oh, okay. So, this rate is like to the assessed valuation.
Well, there's, there's multiple moving parts to the picture, it's, it's, last year, even though we were under the cap, we may have had carry forward from the previous year.
Which we didn't.
So, we did, we've had carry forward, I think, every year of the cap, as far as that.
And we used some of that carry forward last year.
So, it's, it's...
It's non-intuitive, is what you're saying.
Yeah, because of the, mainly because of the carry forward, and because of that, that growth factor, which is that first line on there, the cap isn't really a 2% or inflation cap, it's, it's, could be more, with those other items, and with exclusions, and there's a whole bunch of moving parts here.
We had a strong, uh, vote back last year.
Because the average citizen looks at this and says, hey, there's a 2% tax cap, how can my rate is above 2%? And there's no one sentence answer to that, it's, it's a lot of different things, there's a lot of different reasons.
So, the actual percent increase reflects the tax cap plus other...
It reflects all of, it reflects the money that you're trying to levy, spread out over the taxpayers based upon your assessment role, that's as simple an equation as there is.
According to Lilhut, at the end of September, there is, they had no idea when the checks were going to go out still, because the tax issue wouldn't tell them, local government officials.
I thought I read that we...
2.8 million checks went out, starting October 14, school districts.
Well, yeah, that was right before the election, I remember that.
Yeah, the average of 14, the rebates were $200, upstate, 580 in New York City suburbs in Westchester County, which pays one of the highest property taxes, the rebates will average $800 total between everything.
Total of all, all levels, right?
So, if you take 20% or 25% of that, arts are a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah.
What else, and it's 500,000 is the AGI, essentially, tax plan.
Do an update, I think, December, on the status of the checks that's going to send.
Yeah.
I don't know that anybody has ever told me they got a check.
I don't know if anyone has ever seen you telling me that in the village, I haven't received one.
We all, it's a...
Make sure the money be a tax break up and order it up.
It almost sounds like something that, I think, when you told me about it, Larry, that I said that the village ought to publicize, that we participated in the effort to, had we not, and, I mean, then the problem is, at the end, it's not like we'd be able to tell people definitively, you can expect, by the way, that check to come.
And it's out of our hands, plus, we don't, on an individual basis, we don't know how much each person's going to get, so it's...
It depends on the assessed value.
And then, so, if their income is a certain amount, they get nothing, no matter what.
Yeah.
So, yeah, probably, yes, I got everybody calling Brenda saying...
Well, this is where we're starting from.
Right. So, the next step would be to have our departments come in, amazing departments. So, things that are in the capital budget is a whole different story.
Our next thing is parking, 1991. You don't have to read the whole thing, it was nice, interesting. All right, so...
It's funny how the spaces are. It's like an entourage.
Yeah.
What is this action, is that where?
I remember, then, all this stuff was restrite, that's what the article's about, is, you know, kind of creating spaces along Main Street.
And that looks like the great diagonal.
Yeah.
Kind of a diagonal. And before the flying SUVs.
Anyway, well, no, meters are probably, was made of the commuter lines, that's...
Kenny's really, that those meters are supposed to be, maybe you said those spots, they change the meters.
We can tell you that. All right, so, so, ways back, we started taking a look at the parking regulations in the downtown area, there's a few moving parts here that I'd like to take some time to explain, and then go through some of the rationale behind what's supposed to be the proposed. So, first of all, there are a variety of hourly limits along Main Street and along the side streets. They, in the past, have been structured in such a way, so as to respond to the potential for commuters to invade these neighborhoods and park on the streets, because there's no parking down at the Irvington Station, for example, that's been a common issue over the decades, it may even be discussed in here, I don't remember. So, so, six-hour limits during daytime hours were placed on many of these side streets. Six hours is long enough to allow a resident to park their car on their own street without having to move it very much, but short enough that a commuter wouldn't find it appealing, because if you go to the city, you'd probably go in longer than six hours, so, that was probably the thinking back then. Main Street had its own hourly limits, it's one hour in many spots, it's shorter in some spots, and so, that's one component of this puzzle. The other component that we looked at was how the regulations were structured relating to overnight parking. In this village, the overnight parking, the way overnight parking gets implemented is that people are not permitted to park their car longer than one hour between the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM. So, effectively, unless you're a night owl, and you want to get up and move your car, you effectively can't park your car overnight on the street. But that's commonly referred to as the overnight parking ban, but it's not really a ban, it's, you can park your car for 20, 22 hours, and then, you know, for one hour, you can't park it, or two hours, you can't park it, whatever, whatever that works, or you can move your car, but effectively, it eliminates people from parking overnight on the streets, and that was implemented village-wide back in the 60s, as far as we can tell, maybe, maybe a little bit earlier, and, I think it was early 60s. But then, slowly over time, some streets were eliminated in the, now, that's village-wide, now, in the downtown area, some streets were slowly eliminated over time from that ban. So, the part, the regulation basically says, village-wide, no person can park their car for more than one hour between 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM. So the part, the, the regulation basically says, village-wide, no person can park their car for more than one hour between three AM and six AM except on the following streets. And it lists out a variety of streets throughout the downtown. But surprisingly, certain sides of certain streets were excluded, were not excluded. I mean, it was, it was a bizarre hodgepodge of evolution over time. So we did spend, and I think we talked about it at a public meeting going back, way, ways back. You know, there, we, we actually tried to find out the reason for the overnight parking ban and, uh, there were a lot of different reasons that were, um, suggested, but we rarely really found a true answer. Other than in, in your, in your more residential neighborhoods where people have driveways, um, it's not desirable to have cars parked on the street, not necessarily for safety reasons. Couldn't figure out, because they can park, they can park on the street twenty-three, uh, twenty-two hours of the day. So why is it not safe for one hour of the day? You know what I mean? So that was kind of our argument. But in the, in the downtown area, clearly, the parking on the streets is, is needed for people who don't have, um, their own driveways, which is, or have more cars than they have room for on their driveways, which of course is where we are now in this world, so. So we started to look at it, uh, and, and those, these issues all start to tie together. Because the, the on-street limitations, and the, the long on-street limitations impact, um, where patrons can park for your businesses. They impact where employees can park for those businesses. They, they, they're related to that, to, to those people, you know? In the meantime, the six hourly limits that we had covering the downtown became what I think is unnecessary because in two thousand and five or thereabouts, the village successfully petitioned the state to pass a law that allows us to issue permits to our residents for on-street parking. So that's the so-called residential parking permit. So people who live in the downtown area are able to purchase a permit at a very, very modest cost. The village, you know, is not raising a lot of revenue by issuing a twenty-five dollar permit for a year. And the resident with that permit currently has the ability to park between the hours of seven AM and seven PM on streets in the downtown except Main and Astor, which I'll explain in a minute. They can park on any of these other side streets in excess of the posted hourly limits. That's all that permit allows them to do. So if I live on North Fair Street and I work at night and sleep during the day, I can leave my car on the street, North Fair Street, beyond six hours, get a ticket. As long as I buy a permit. So what, what that effectively means is that the residents have, the residents are not impacted by changes in the hourly limits if you make changes. So if you decide, which we're going to suggest, that you change all of the hourly limits on the side streets to two hours, to turn those spaces over a little bit, a little bit more. The residents aren't impacted by that because those that need to park longer during the day can still do so with their permit. So the only thing you're doing is you're, you're creating a little additional, additional turnover of the spaces and additional availability essentially by making, um, people who don't have permits not stay there longer than two hours. So how is this, how are those two issues tied together? Because they seem a little different. Well, one of the ways they're tied together is that, um, if you, if you lower your limit, your hourly limits on the side streets, it's the side streets where the employees are parking for your Main Street businesses in large part, okay? So if you lower it to two hours, that effectively makes it impractical for them to park there. They can go out and move their car for two hours, but effectively, it's not practical. So that's an issue. And so now you need a solution to that issue and, and one of the solutions that we have is to allow and encourage people, employees that work in the business district to utilize the aqueduct parking lot. That's your single biggest parking area that you have in the downtown. It's not exactly central to the business district, but it's not far from the business district. And if you don't have another alternative to park, it's, it's not a bad place to pull into when you're going to work.
There are enough spaces there, Larry, for the?
Well, that's, that's the issue that, I mean, and that, and this is where, um, this is where stuff has to tie into the overnight parking. So the aqueduct parking lot is less utilized during the day and more utilized overnight. The reason that the aqueduct parking, one of the main reasons, I mean, it's not the only reason, but the, the main reason for the existence of the aqueduct parking lot, aside from providing parking to the business district during the day, is that it provides off-street parking to the residents in the immediate vicinity of the aqueduct lot because it just so happens that all the, all the streets around the aqueduct parking lot, which is right here, um, Crook Place, Home Place, Grinnell, uh, and even a portion of South Ferris, as we've found out, they have an overnight parking restriction. The reason that you probably heard, so those of you that were on the board, um, a year and a half ago, you heard from some of the residents there and you probably, and I can send you correspondence from then. They, they like the overnight parking ban, they like their street to be open without people parking on it in the evening and overnight. You know, arguments were made about fire trucks and maneuverability and all that and, um, and even snow removal for that matter. And, you know, we, we are contending in the course of this project here that, you know, if it's, if, if parking on the street is unsafe overnight, then why is it unsafe for the other twenty-two hours of the day when you can actually park there legally? So that's the argument that we're taking. You may hear different from some of your residents and that's, you know, that's just to be expected. But if you allow, um, overnight parking in this area, you effectively reduce the demand on your aqueduct parking lot. Because those residents, unless they have multiple cars, but they, they don't need to take their cars off the street. The, um, most of the resident permits that we sell for the aqueduct are, if not all, are for the residents of that area or close by on Main Street and whatnot. And so if you can, if you can free up spaces and demand in your aqueduct lot, then you can start to solve your employee parking problem during the day and into the evening, especially for the residents. It's the evening crossover time that's the problem. The, um, if, if this was a perfect world and everyone worked exactly until five, then we wouldn't have worked and came home at, you know, five thirty and we wouldn't have an issue in the aqueduct lot. Employees could park there, residents would come home there via space. We already know that residents come home, and you heard from one of these residents and it's, it's not the only person. You heard that on South Ecker Street, for example, when they come home at five thirty or six o'clock, there's absolutely no parking on South Ecker Street. And it's not because everyone has to work, it's because the employees, especially of the restaurants that happen to be in that area, are parked there and there's no hourly limits. After six PM, there's no hourly limits on the parking on those side streets. So that's a problem that needs to be solved as well. So, so there's multiple, um, multiple prongs of this problem that we're trying to address. But basically, um, to, to start, what I attached to the, um, what I attached to the agenda here, um, yeah, that's not really, so what I attached here is, I mean, I listed out the problems that I, that I, that I just mentioned initially. But what we're suggesting is that everything, uh, in the Main Street area and the side streets be changed to two-hour parking. Main Street is currently mostly one-hour parking. The rationale here, as I've listed and as we, we talked about with the business owners and even some of the residents, is that, um, that a longer time limit on Main Street would actually encourage longer visits to Main Street and the shopping district in the area. And, and the side benefit is that it would actually be consistent with the side streets, which is having something that's easy to understand is a, is always good. Because that's not what you have now, so. So side streets, uh, would be, would also be two hours. We're suggesting that those hourly limits extend into the evening, further into the evening than they do now. Most of the streets, um, the hourly limits on the side streets are only until six PM. After that, it's, it's, anyone can park as long as they want.
Like you mentioned, at a recent meeting, I parked in a side street and came out to find a sign taped to the front of my car saying, "Move your car."
Where you parked in front of someone's driveway without knowing it? Really?
Just saying.
Okay.
People gave them a little territory.
I don't think I was our police that taped it on there, so that's good.
It wasn't the police, right?
No. Okay, so the proposal would be two-hour parking all throughout the entire business district, applicable from eight AM to eight PM. Again, none of this would affect the residents because they would have their tags, which, in a, in a parallel proposal, and I don't know if I listed it here, yeah. Yeah, we would also, I'm sorry, let's skip to the second page at the bottom, very bottom one. We would also modify the residential parking under rules so that those residential permits would be effective eight AM to eight PM. They would mimic when the hourly limits are currently, they, they, it's seven AM, seven PM, we'd have to, uh, so, so again, the, the goal here is not to hurt the residents, but to, to create a more consistent system that has shorter hourly limits, at least for the side streets, to create more turnover in the parking, which means more, essentially more availability.
Larry, what about the fifteen-minute spaces?
Yeah, so I did make a note here because there are some, um, there are some spaces on Main Street that are fifteen-minute parking, they're located right in front of a deli, for example, or, or some other short-term need. There's no reason why we can't have a system, whether it's how it's codified, I'm not exactly sure. There's no reason why we can't have a system that responds to the businesses that you have here so that if you happen to have a deli this week and you don't have one there next week, the sign comes down. You know what I mean? It's not, this doesn't have to be a, a new study that's undertaken. You know, it's, you just respond to the businesses and the needs of those businesses, um, as they ebb and flow. So we can come up with a solution for that. But, but basically what I was suggesting here, and I, I, I put in just a blanket statement, which is that, um, whatever is currently something other than one hour would, like fifteen minutes, would remain what it is. We're not suggesting that any of that gets changed. I don't know whether any of it's even codified, to be honest with you.
I don't think the fifteen-minute one is now.
No, I doubt it. So, but I'm sure we can come up with language that is, you know, as, as signed or as, as published or something like that.
Can I just ask a question, Larry? So when you, in the second bullet, when you say you change the Main Street side streets to two-hour parking, then what's the impact on all those employees who are parking on the side streets?
Right, they, they would need to, to park in all their locations.
Okay.
The aqueduct is the first suggestion, but there is another suggestion that is a, a point of, that was considerable point of debate, which I'll bring, I'll get to in a minute. Okay, so, uh, well, all right, let's move on to that topic. The, the second, the second to last bullet point on the, on the second page there. I, I, I thought that, um, it would make some sense to issue a very limited number of resident parking permits to the business owners. You can come up with a number, but it would be one or two for each, you know, not, not six if they have six employees, but one or two, a, a, a half number. On the basis that, um, you know, if, if, if a business has six employees, that means right now, six employees are parking on your side streets and not moving for the day for the most part, or at least for six hours. If you, if you reduced it and you had the proper enforcement for that reduction and you issued one or two permits to those businesses, now you'd have one or two instead of six. The thing now, because it's, the reason for the suggestion is, I'm not entirely sure whether the aqueduct lot can support all of the parking needs of the employees. And they, they prob, it probably can.
How many spots are in here, Larry?
Uh, it's in the forties.
Forties.
Hold on, let me look at my nineteen ninety-one.
So there are.
Are those, those would be, are those available too? Those are, those are currently, this, this is the lot, I call it the field point lot.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's, it's, uh, you enter into the field point, it's immediately on your right.
Yeah.
Those spaces are all two-hour spaces and, and the business owners on Broadway will tell you that that lot is for them, you know, and the use of, for their patrons because the people patronizing those businesses on Broadway, if you don't find a spot on the street, there's no place for them to park, so.
I guess River City Grill has a lot more parking now.
But the detailing store is not there?
Right.
You know, where Virginia Rizzo is there.
Right?
They have part of, they have part of the parking.
Yes, they do some of that, but.
But anyway.
So there's not much on the street and that, that lot has been traditionally used by those, um, patronizing those businesses. So.
But do we know what it's?
So if it's two hours, it's two hours.
For, for, because I see it sometimes used heavily and sometimes not used at all. I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's all.
It's all over the place.
Yeah, it's huge, I don't know, like, I've parked in this plenty of times, it's great.
Right. So, I mean, we can do a survey of that and figure out the various times a day.
You can mix it too, can you?
And you can tell how many spots there are in the aqueduct lot, can't you, by your little?
Number of permits?
Yeah, well, permits are.
Oh, that doesn't tell you the spaces.
Well, whatever.
Yeah.
It does matter, but.
It's worth looking at the field, the field. Although it's not convenient for someone down the street, way down, it's convenient for those, uh, uh, businesses like near Main Street School.
You know, Larry, I don't know how hard this is to do, my guess is it's not, but somebody, there was a lot in Hastings that people, some people were arguing had always had spaces and other people said it's always full. Somebody put a time, a, a timeline scan, a camera there that watched all day. And I think it was really hard and you could tell how much it was, was vacant.
Right.
There, you probably have somebody who could.
Yeah.
Do something like that. It, and it, it revealed so much, it was so helpful.
Pardon?
I said like live wire.
I thought that's the kind of thing you would do, Mark.
The cameras from, uh.
Your daughter.
They'll find out the usage pattern better for that lot, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One thing, just as a little, nitty, nitty picky thing, second item down, second page, modify aqueduct parking rules, allow for non-resident parking during working hours, eight to nine. I thought that was weird that that was nine, but everywhere else you're using eight PM as the drop off.
That came from one of our group discussions. We had the business owners and then we had the residents in two little focus groups. And that might have, one, some, some things changed when we had those discussions.
I just think if you do that, it's going to, especially when you have everywhere else, the two-hour parkage is eight to eight. It seems like here, that's going to be our, people are going to confuse that immediately because it's. Is there a value to that extra hour?
The extra hour came up, uh, in our discussions with some of the business owners. We, we met, I, I don't think I even outlined this, we met with, uh, a few different business owners on Main Street with different types of businesses, retail and restaurant and that type. And so we, we, we talked about, you know, the, how long and when employees would need to park and that's, the nine PM came out of that discussion. The, the eight PM, I understand that it's not consistent, but the eight PM. The 8:00 PM, I understand it's not consistent, but the 8:00 PM, remember, that doesn't mean that after 8:00 PM people can't park. It means that there's actually no time limits after 8:00 PM. So someone could pull in for an eight o'clock dinner and stay there until 10:00 or 11:00 or whatever, it doesn't matter. So it's not the end of parking, whereas the 9:00 PM is a hard cutoff that after 9:00 PM, the non-resident would not be permitted into the lot. So it's a little different focus. You can debate the number, I'm not suggesting that it can't.
No, I just, I was hoping if you could regularize the number, then it'd be definitely special where I would remember.
But eight is actually too early, so, because for the restaurant employees there, that's an example, so. And that 9:00 PM came right out of a discussion with one of the restaurateurs on Main Streets.
There was some.
So, just another quick thing. The debate, the point of debate about the idea of the resident permit going to a business owner, the couple of businesses that we talked to didn't seem all that worried about it, but I also don't know whether, if it turns out there's not enough parking in the aqueduct, that view may change.
They didn't like the idea.
They liked the idea, but I wouldn't say they were militant about keeping that idea. They liked it as we would have expected.
Which I'm getting at, the resident permits.
Yes.
About giving out the resident permits to the businesses, potentially for the use of the owners.
Would we have a count on these ways?
Yeah, we haven't done that, so.
Or maybe we should get, just to get something to do with.
They can what?
A count of, you know, a rough count of employees.
I think that we had to do that.
Just so we could see, but, because otherwise, I mean, it's gonna change over time, but at least it gives you a set point.
Actually, we did. I thought we went on that direction a bit. There was one chart, one thing like this, that I thought we had some of those numbers in there, but, okay.
I think that would be really helpful. I know, obviously, some people hire residents, so there's no parking issue at all.
Right.
But I think it would be very helpful to know, we know how many spots we've got and how many permits were prepared to give to business owners as resident permits, but if there's not some kind of jibe between those two numbers, then you've got employees who have to move their car every two hours.
Right, which is not what the goal here is, yeah.
Which, I'm sorry, is that what?
It's not what the goal here was.
No, right.
Yeah.
Now, I do know, the other thing is that there's a certain number of employees that commute on the train and therefore, but most of the owners, I think, that I've seen, the vast majority seem to be working at Bridge Street.
Some people also take the bus.
Yeah, we can, I think the issue is not so much just one or employees, but after employees, they require on-street spaces. Right, and if you do have, you do have some inside bank, for example, that has their own parking, so. But there's not very many examples of that, as you know.
Did you want to discuss the little lot at the bottom of Main Street on the north side?
Yep. The parking lot down at the bottom of the hill, below Il Seriso, right across from, call it the horseshoe lot because of Astor. Yeah, the corner of Astor and Main. That lot is permit-only for commuters. It's owned by the village, but it is used as part of the commuter parking for the Irvington Station. It's part of the inventory for that. And that's not gonna change, at least anytime soon. We have a lease agreement with Metro North and they manage that parking. I mean, I won't go into the history, but in short, if you took those spaces away tomorrow, you'd have, you know, probably 25 or 30 residents calling to tell you how much they pay in taxes and why can't they park at the station, so. That's just what would happen, so. They're gonna remain as commuter spaces for the time being. But Metro North did confirm to us that evening and of course weekends, that lot can be used without permit for business district parking.
Right, evenings at post-six?
They do give me a time. They basically said, "Look, if you pull in there at four o'clock in the afternoon and there's a space, you're not getting a ticket. If you pull in at eight o'clock in the morning, you're gonna get a ticket if you don't have a permit."
And who gets the ticket? Is it?
Metro North enforces it.
Oh, okay. So it's Metro North, but that they're at least.
It's a Metro North lot, yeah.
They contracted out to.
We didn't, yes.
No, no, they contracted. It's, Metro North doesn't actually, isn't parking management.
Yeah, they're vendor, L.A. Zee Parking.
So that's, so it's not an Irvington police officer who would write a ticket for that?
Correct. But they did say that their enforcement policy, since it is a village lot, is that village residents can use it after hours. And I can get a definition of what that is, but it's, bottom line is, we can consider that for evening, evening parking is available to the downtown and to the business district.
I mean, I know likewise, people treat the parking spots over on West Main the same way. They park there to go to restaurants.
Right, yeah, they're after hours, right.
So you were gonna say something about Astor Street?
Bridge Street.
Oh, Astor.
Yeah, so, one of the things that you should, that you should understand is in the residential parking permit law, the law was created to allow residents to be able to park on the street in excess of the time limits. But the legislature was very clear in what they, I think they're very clear in what they adopted, enacted, which is that, that the parking in front of business establishments can't be reserved for residents only. All right? That's, essentially that's what it says.
So that's why the Main Street can't be permitted.
Right, and North and South Astor Street has been applied to as well. I mean, South Astor Street doesn't matter, but North, well, it's both.
It's both. Oh, okay.
Well, you do have business establishments on South Astor, so. But there's no parking in front of them, so it's, North Astor's the issue.
Right.
In addition to Main Street. So if I, if I hold a residential parking permit, I can live on Main Street and get a permit. I can live on a side street and get a permit. But it doesn't allow me to park on Main Street in excess of the time limits. And if you think about it, that's what you, well, you know, hey, you don't want that to happen. You don't want someone to park their car for eight hours in front of the deli, you know? And it just, that's not, and the legislature was clear about that because they didn't want to impede business and all that. So, so that was applied to Main Street and it was applied to North and South Astor Street. It's, we didn't really talk about it in any great degree during our meetings with residents. I know you have one resident here who happens to live on North Astor who would probably like to see the residential parking permit be allowed on North Astor and we probably should look at the real makeup of the business mix on that street because this law was adopted, you know, 12, 13 years ago. We should really see whether it truly is an extension of your business district or not. And so it should be looked at, so I'd leave it as an open point at this point.
But that, that lot at the bottom that we just described as the horseshoe, after four o'clock, say, that's, that becomes not just an employee. No one knows, you know, or cares that somebody might be, might live there on North Astor or anywhere after four o'clock. It's just that, come eight o'clock in the morning.
Well, it'd be probably earlier.
Well, yeah.
Probably six o'clock.
Oh, is it six?
Those spaces fill up first.
Yeah, so that would be important to find out because it could be useful for residents if it's, if it was eight o'clock that you would see somebody leaving to work at eight o'clock. But if it's six o'clock, that's gonna limit.
Yeah, I don't think that lot's gonna be all that useful because those spaces fill up first, there's no doubt. Those are prime spaces right next to the platform, so. If you lift the overnight parking restriction on North Astor Street as is being proposed, then the people that live in that area will have much, that much improved their situation. Their situation will be improved just from that. If their hours of work or their hours of sleep are such that they could actually use that lot without getting ticketed, that's great too, but they could probably be doing it right now if they want. You know what I mean? So I think it's just an unusual, they'd have to be out of there pretty early in the morning.
And then the little section going down towards the bridge from Buckout.
Right, Bridge Street, yeah.
Yes, that would be, that would be the same system.
Yeah, I don't see why, right now, it's already two hours of parking, so.
Two now?
What are we talking about?
But if you had, but if you were a resident, you would have your.
Just north of this?
I mean, the connection between North Buckout and North Astor, and.
Yeah, a little stretch there. That's two-hour parking according to this. And it would remain two-hour parking and overnight parking would be permitted on it.
And if you were a resident and you had your resident override, it would apply there?
Yes.
Yeah.
This obviously is a great deal of time and effort that's gone into this and this really does, you know, it's much fairer and it solves a lot of the concerns, obviously. Just one little shout-out for the six-hour spots. We clearly don't want to allow regular commuters to be using, you know, parking in our streets to commute into the city for their jobs, but they're, it's not unusual to find that there's no gate parking available at the train station lot and the six-hour lot, spots are really helpful for people who are going in to the museum for lunch.
I just wanted to say.
Or a medical appointment or a job interview.
Or even not going into the city, but going, I mean, I've used, I use a lot to go in to see a show and come back out, but going to Yonkers, right, doing, or going up to Cretin, the things you can do that basically.
And you're saying this now, there's times where there's no metered spaces now?
Okay, and the artsy station, sometimes there's simply no metered spots left.
Right.
The, the non-permit parking is.
Wait.
And there's not that many of them either. So, you know, you could potentially have a need to be into the city by a particular time and very, very, you can't assume you're going to be able to get parking at the station. You know, it's not a question of paying the parking fee, it's a question of whether there'll be actually spots left. So the six-hour parking, that bottom of Main Street and that, you know, there's, you know, is very useful for that purpose.
Maybe, one thing I was thinking is, if you had sliding, so the six-hour parking kicked in at, I don't know what, like 10:00 AM or, I don't know what it'd be, so that you wouldn't get the early morning commuters, there would be no option for them, you know what I'm saying?
But suppose you have an eight o'clock doctor's appointment or an eight o'clock.
I understand.
So you can have a job interview early in the morning.
So the ones that face, the spots that are pull-in, that face the train station just to the south of Bazaar, that aren't Bazaar.
Right.
Right now, those are some of the six-hour ones, right?
No.
I know, I don't think.
Those are the six-hours, the last, the bottom two streets on Main Street.
On the right, yeah.
And then if you make a right where El Seriso is, it's two hours, it's six hours and then it turns into two.
Right.
And South Buckout has six hours.
Yeah.
The one between Astor and Main.
So there's, you know, it's not a huge number of spots, but I think it has a certain use. And I, again, everybody, it depends on whose office is scored, but I just would mention that, that there are people who are not looking to make, you know, commute to a job in parking front of somebody's house all night long, every day. But the occasional commuter can be a real problem, there's not any ability.
Occasional permit, commuter permit, one-day-only, six-hour permit. I'm only partially facetious, but you know, if you open it up, I agree totally that, I mean, that's how I make use of it also, quite a bit, but.
Well, we don't have a mechanism for issuing a permit to a commuter on a public street. We have, we have a mechanism to issue it to a resident and you can't put up.
But why couldn't you, you could, maybe that you could, somebody who's anticipating going into a show could stop by Village Hall and spend five dollars to buy a six-hour parking.
No, but I think we have a legal.
You're not, oh, legal, legal.
Wait, oh, that?
Well, how does, a lot of villages around here have parking meters and we don't? I don't want to open up the whole, how do they get parking meters? And it sounded like in this article, you apparently used to have parking meters. Is that true?
I don't ever.
Yeah, parking meters don't, don't.
Let's see, on a public street, parking meter.
Anybody's money, yeah.
If you had those six-hour, those areas actually have one of those automated parking things where you had to, yeah, it's a meter.
That's what they have at the stations.
It's a meter, yeah. You know, we have those on the others, I mean, we have it in the artsy station for some.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that, I don't know what that, I don't know what that gets you though, because.
Because people who are trying to, you know, people who are trying to use it, I would think it would deter people, if you, if you set it so you couldn't get more than like five hours or six hours out of it, then it could considerably deter commuters who know they're gonna get a ticket.
Well, they would, if it's a regular commuter for a job, they're gonna get a ticket now.
I mean, if it's six-hour parking, then they're gonna get a ticket regardless.
I guess, I think it really depends on what time, what the weather's like and when the parking agent goes by, because there are times that, I know I've pulled in at, and will come back a little bit late, more than six hours, and I'm thinking, oh my God, I'm hosed, but the tires were never marked, so.
Right, enforcement, this plan doesn't work unless enforcement is consistent.
That's part of the discussion.
And that applies to the current system that we have, so that's.
Yeah.
But I don't think that changes with the meter. It might, it might make it more evident that the person's parked there too long for central meters. A central parking station doesn't do that unless the parking attendant looks at it. But I don't think the meter is the answer necessarily.
I was thinking it was some kind of a psychological thing where you made it really explicit that you.
Anyway, so, yeah. Okay, well, I mean.
We can, we can discuss.
We can look and see what.
But basically, I think this solves so many of the problems and it's, it's really more fair, reasonable.
Understood.
Concerns of residents with business owners, but the two concerns that we have is, do we have enough parking for employees?
Yes.
And, you know, can we, can we do something for the occasional commuter who might get boxed out of the lot?
And I think that's, I mean, I really, Janice advised you brought that up because I was gonna bring it up, because you know, there's a lot more times.
I got something in before you?
You know what I have to say about that? A confession. Oh, no, I, I know people, a lot of people from out of town who say you should park, park in Irvington because you should get six hours, you can run down to court and whatever.
And they're not people who.
You can get us their license plate.
I know, there are times.
Under the current.
My point is, I know people outside of Irvington do it. Somebody told me about it before, you know, before I worked for Irvington.
Is there, then is there?
But you make a good point. There are some times that.
Is there a way to get a resident, some kind of resident identification which would be necessary to use those six-hour spots? I mean, I don't think, you know, what the legality is.
You know.
But the, I mean.
That's essentially.
If you go back to the law, I mean, you can look at all this, but the law.
It's very strict.
Yeah, the preamble and the whole premise of the law was that there's a burden being placed on the residents because of excess parking by commuters.
No, I didn't understand.
But that's for a resident parking permit. I don't know, that would be worth looking into is cannot, can a municipality give a kind of any exemption matter, not to residents for whenever they want it, but for, I'm not sure it can be done, but it probably worth looking.
That would be a matter of, like, you'd stop in at Village Hall and get this thing when you wanted it, if that were legal.
Or I have a resident identification, but mine is pink instead of green. It means that I have no right to regular parking on the street, but I can park in designated six-hour spots.
Well, that'd be, I think that would be tricky, Janice, because that is a form of a resident parking permit and the state is so strict about that. But I'm wondering about the occasional exception. I don't know.
How would that be any different than? Yeah, but how would that be any different than I get back to paying that? And you consider going and paying that Village Hall for a six-hour permit for one day per day? Isn't that what we're talking about?
Yeah, we have to give that to any person.
Yeah, you wouldn't restrict it to residents widely.
Except for all your residents.
Do you know who it was? No one, it's not anymore. It was the accountant in my office, he was our accountant and he told us.
I've heard that, I've heard this story, though, also people do that. They drive in from across, from Nyack or whatever, they drive. They drive in from across, from Nyack or wherever, they drive in and they park in Irvington and take the train.
Yes, that, but I thought that was, they actually pay the seven dollars.
The only place they can park, I mean, other than on the street, is the Metro North Lot.
Yeah, so if they get there and they fit into the Metro North Lot, pay that way.
That's the actual law from the state. And so I think it's helpful, you've seen this, right?
I've seen it, yeah.
We don't have to look at it now, this is just for your...
Right, it's very, yeah. I mean, when everybody in town says to Brian or somebody, "Why can't we just have resident parking?" You know, "Why can't we all stick these up on our..."
I have a copy of the resident parking...
If the R Z park people wanted to make it, call it the R Z park homeowners, get the parking R Z lot.
Yeah, we're gonna get that fast.
Is it an act of the legislature?
Yeah, that's, that's our actual report.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
And I, I think that, you know, when I...
Six hours.
And an important point to me, important point to me over the two years or so that we've actually been talking about this, is that, reading through the village code and seeing all the different hodgepodge of sections that are even contradictably enforced what's in the code, it just struck me as something that should be cleaned up.
Yeah, whether or not you change it.
Whether or not you change it, you have...
My guess is every time someone complains about something, you've got something, yeah.
Yes, that's exactly what happened, and it just stacked up, and it had no rhyme or reason, and this not only brings rhyme or reason to the village code, but it also addresses, and I'm sure there'll be glitches, but it's looking at all these various needs, and then with Mary Ann's guns, keeping it legal and not trying to do something that was skirting the intention of the state legislature. So, um, I, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I, and we did talk to quite a few people.
I, I know this has been a long, long, arduous project.
And it doesn't mean that we figured it all out, but it sure seems like we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, it's, 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 to me, it's now, we've kind of gotten the big thing now. To me, like, you know, eight AM peak, five forty-five, you're gonna get a ticket because it takes two hours to get it, you know, like, that's, I don't know if that's the best, you know, with seven better, you know, or seven thirty, you know, like, I don't know. You know, so I think it's, it's the tweaking of the little things that I would think you've gotten the broad strokes down pretty well here to address a lot of...
But I think simple is good.
Yeah, simple is good.
Because otherwise, we're gonna have to start generating those weird methods that...
Yeah.
Like the tourist map?
Yeah, you can park here, but not there.
We'll have, we'll have coding with colors on the...
And, and they think about two hours on Main Street really came home to me when I thought about, I mean, for those of you who get your hair done or don't, but if you do two or three things, if you do one longer thing, you're saying, "Oh, I can't also have lunch with my friend if I do this, because now I have to move my car harder." So it's, it seems, it's an encourager of business. We have not been ignoring the needs of business by all these changes. We have thought about it from many angles.
No, I did, actually, but it was probably, it was probably better received by the businesses than I thought. And the residents, you know, there was, there was a mix, but it was...
There's a mix of people who say, "You know, that makes so much more sense, just park in front, that's what everybody else does, why is this little street different?" And then others are saying, "No, it's been that way for a long time, why don't we just leave it the way it's been?" But if the reason was fire trucks, as Larry said, if the fire truck can get through there twenty-two hours a day, what's the rationale? So it, it just, a lot of it's...
They get wide here at night?
Yeah.
People are sleepy there.
But specifically between three and six. At two, it's okay.
You get the inexperienced drivers.
And, and people out in the other section shouldn't, I mean, nothing is changing out on, um, where the place is.
Well, granted, except the, you know, Jana's point was, I was thinking selfishly to myself, at noon, that I know that I have six hours now. It's okay, because then it's six o'clock and I'm good. You know, sir, I think that's the only, you know, selfish thing.
So that's just a little section, you know, just...
Well, I tried to make it so that it was so simple that you'd just say, "It's two hours, just forget about it, it's two hours."
I think, I think if you did that, if you did say half, you'd have it whole section, or six hours, and it'd be... I think, I think also, I know we tried to keep, I remember when I got a ticket once, I went in, and I said, "I didn't even know this was a violation." They said, "Well, we're keeping sign posted to a minimum."
I think we have, there's a little of the judge said to me, that's right, I said, "There's no sign posted here and everything." This was, this was years ago. But he said, "There's actually," and he told me, "There's a sign, 'As you come into town.'" He told me, "There's no," I used to park over at North Astor Street when I lived there. And he said, "There's a sign on the way in that says, 'No overnight parking unless it's a sign.'"
And it's in the village code, and you should have read it.
Exactly.
But, you know, so to me, I think we do have to do a better job with signage, which is another part of it.
The overnight, we're not, I, the recommendation is not to put signs on every single street.
Saying you can't park.
Yeah, that's actually pretty typical, most of the people just have that as your entry ticket.
Everybody would find it on the way in now.
Well, maybe, working section regulations on, uh, the location of the site.
Oh, yeah, once, you know, we, we...
I don't know, we just want to see if it's...
Once it's all straight on the level.
Yeah, a lot of places, you know, Friday parking, so like, weekend parking Saturdays, Sundays. Yeah, so I'm just saying, like...
That question came up, actually, because I, I wasn't sure what the answer was. There were some streets here where, where the time limits extend to Saturday, and there are some, the current.
Yes.
And some where it extends to Friday.
Okay, just...
And in fact, the one, and, and in fact, it's, it's a, it's on the sign a different way.
Okay.
So it's just totally bizarre, you know?
So it's unfor...
Well, yeah, if someone challenged it. So, so, so I think that was one of the questions that I raised in the meeting with the residents, and even with the business owners, was, do you feel like there should be restrictions on this, on a Saturday, for example? And the resounding answer was, "No, we don't see the need for it." So I think the pressures for parking on the weekends aren't there, so they didn't feel the need to keep turning that parking over.
Okay, that's interesting.
Because the time limits, I know that, that's, I didn't know the answer. And so I kind of, we asked them.
I'm just saying, do you think that there would be more people, or there might be more people in town, trying to get into town to do stuff on, on Saturdays and Sundays when they're off?
But there's less business.
It's quieter, for sure.
These streets are a lot more empty, I think, except Sundays, you've got a lot of people parking for the day, for residents, which is, which is fine.
So you have the, you have the farmer's market, it's on Sundays now, and that's fine. They have a lot of parking in there anyway, so that's not an issue, but...
Yeah, no.
How could this impact the Astor Buck building?
I think the only proposals we have go down to Station Road, don't go beyond that. I don't think...
Those six hour parking on Buckout, if they're using that, they have to move their car more often. If they got a six hour space, they'd only have to move it once during the day.
So we're not in Spira Park then, Sphero Park, whatever, we're not talking about that? It's, this is really only the, nominally the streets right off of Main Street.
The area of people who are allowed to get residential permits are just the connecting streets, you know, Main Street. And if, we were pretty sure that the business owners could get these, we think, we'll discuss.
So that wouldn't change, so their situation would be just as...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would be as good or as bad as it is now on purpose.
Yeah, it's on Astor, I think so.
So that's good.
I thought there was...
So, maybe we noodle on it a little bit, and, you know, maybe tweak things a little.
This is so much...
Yeah, that's, it would definitely move it up.
Yes, the idea of getting rid of the signs, you know, in our whole street scape effort, you know, would be, we'd be stripping out the, removing old, bent, and faded, and unreadable, and getting rid of all of them, and then having the ones that are part of this mid-system up in the street.
That should be correct, too.
Yeah, so they'd be right, and there wouldn't be four of them, all lined up.
Okay, so we'll gather some more data, bring that back, and then we'll try to find some of these points, and hopefully...
I'll be stripping out the village code.
You need to get it done.
He needs to, he needs to get it. Build the layup for a little time. Okay, so we have, we have Mary Ann here. Do we, um...
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. I need advice at council.
Okay, right, I'm sure you're here for a reason.
So, yes...
You don't care about parking that much.
But she does.
No, actually, she does.
That's true.
We've always left on the agenda, looking at open... I mean, actually, I'd be okay if we just skipped it tonight, and really, I feel like we really have to prioritize getting feedback to the D E I S.
Okay, so that's...
Before we lose interest. All right, so we...
So are we, you're moving to...
Are you proposing to adjourn? I'm sorry, exactly. All of you?